Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call our October 4th, 2022 meeting to order. City, uh, roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Stone.
Here.
Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem DeForest.
Here.
Mayor Ingram.
I am present.
Let the record reflect, all members are present.
Any public comments at this time, closed session items only?
Saying none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, announce closed session items, please.
Yes, as listed on the agenda, the City Council will meet in closed session on one item, CS1, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation pursuant to government code, section 54956.9D2 and D3, significant exposure to litigation in one case.
Is that it, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we, yes, if you can recess.
Thank you very much, we're gonna go ahead and recess to closed session. We will see you at 6 o'clock.
Thank you.
Mike's wrong.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Ellis, don't hold people up, please take your seat. Thank you, sir. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and reconvene our meeting, um, and call our 6:00 PM meeting, or it's 6:05, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so, um, before we go into city business, I'd like to notify the public that some households may be experiencing some technical issues accessing our local government channel. The city is actively working on resolving this issue. This meeting is being streamed on the city's website, Facebook Live and YouTube, and we do apologize for any inconvenience, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and, uh, we've addressed the issue with Facebook Live as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Alright, we're gonna go to announcement of closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the City Council met in closed session on one item to confer with its legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation pursuant to government code, section 54956.9D2 and D3. The counsel was updated, no reportable action, thank you.
Thank you, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Stone.
Here.
Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem DeForest.
Here.
Mayor Ingram.
I am present.
Let the record reflect, all members are present.
Okay, on that note, um, pledge of allegiance. Mother Williams, would you come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Yes. Who better to? Do we have a microphone for it? Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If you wanna stand here.
Thank you. It's not too high up.
Well, okay.
Yeah, you're leading us. To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pastor? Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate your invitation. If you'll bow your heads with me, holy Father, we come before you, and first I wanna say how thankful I am for the city, living here 30 years and raising a family here. Ask, Lord, that you continue to bless the city. I'm very thankful and appreciative of the wisdom that you've given the city officials for so many years. I ask, Lord, that you'd continue to bless the city and many, many more families would be able to enjoy the wonderful living conditions that have been provided here for so many years. We are blessed to live in a safe city. Father God, we ask that you would keep our first responders safe as they protect us, and, Lord, we ask that you'd continue to give direction and wisdom to our elected and our appointed officials. We pray this in your Son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, thank you, Pastor. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and move through for the presentation from the RCHCA, and, uh, do we have a representative here, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have Harry Sandifal, who will be presenting a proclamation on behalf of the RCHCA. Mr. Sandifal?
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor, members of the board, our council, excuse me, get confused, uh, staff and the public here. I'm here with you this evening to recognize the city of Marietta for its dedication to sustainable development and also the protection of sensitive natural resources, particularly the Stevens kangaroo rat. I'll give a brief history before presenting the award this evening. Back in 1989, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service listed the Stevens kangaroo rat as an endangered species, and for those of us that were around, we could recall that there is a drastic slowing in development because of the listing of the kangaroo rat. The city of Marietta had the foresight to join eight other cities in the county of Riverside in forming the Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency. In turn, the Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency formed the region's first multi-habitat conservation plan for the Stevens kangaroo rat. Since then, the member agencies have focused development and set aside land for conservation. The RCHCA has been assembling a reserve system of over 44,000 acres within western Riverside County. For about 30 years now, we have been managing that land by either restoring habitat for the kangaroo rat or improving whatever habitat is there. Fast forward to 2022, the Riverside County Habitat Conservation Conservation Agency and its partners were able to prove to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service that the kangaroo rat is no longer in peril of extinction. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service agreed and downlisted the species from endangered to threatened. Now, a downlisting is a major occurrence, and it's a very rare occurrence, particularly here in Southern California. With that said, we recognize that that great achievement would not be possible without your help. Without the guidance, the support and the leadership that the city of Marietta has lent throughout the years, we, that all made it possible. We know we couldn't have done it without you. We'd like to express our thanks for everything that you've done. We know in particular, at least the latest three members of our board, Mary Ingram, Ms. White, and DeForest as well, had a lot of contributions to this particular moment. Mary Ingram, I know you're, uh, the Chair of the Board when we went through a transition period, Councilwoman DeFor, uh, I'm sorry, Ms. White, I know that you were in the thick of it when we were negotiating with the wildlife agencies. I know you've been very active in coming out to our events, I believe you were at the downlisting event that we had a few months ago, and very supportive of all the projects that we've done. And, uh, I know as our current Vice Chair, I know that you have also supported this and got to witness this occasion, which is, again, is a rare and momentous occasion, a great achievement for the city of Marietta and the region overall, so we really appreciate that. So on behalf of the Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency, I'd like to present this award to the city of Marietta, and again, express all our thanks for everything that you have done throughout the years.
As this, you think the little rat is just something, but as the rat goes, so many other features and habitat-related items, so it's, it's not just this little SPR, it is all of the SPR represented in the environmental conditions that really are the telltale sign for what's going on, so, good work, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. You can go ahead and read it. Hmm? Alright, so we're doing a certificate of recognition for Richie's Diner, and my family, away from my family, I think, uh, hmm? Okay, yeah. So, would you like to go ahead and read this, read first then?
No, I'd like to, to introduce her group and introduce her, and then call upon you a little bit later to read it.
Alright, that works.
Perfect, thank you. May I take the floor?
We hope everyone who is here to honor Richie's Diner and Mrs. Linda Williams, please join behind the daisies. Now, we're gonna have you. How are you? We, we, jot in, hello, welcome. Hi. Can I just move this over here?
Welcome, everybody. So, there are people and there are places, and tonight we're gonna talk and honor a person and a place. We're honoring Mrs. Linda Williams, who is here tonight with us in her patriotic outfit and sweater, because she is a patriot, and we're also honoring the 31st anniversary of a restaurant here in Marietta that's so much more than a restaurant. The name of it is Richie's Real American Diner, and we're honoring it because it's their 31st anniversary. The diner is really an anchor and a home away from home for many people, whether they're young children going there to celebrate with their family, or to have a dish of ice cream, or if it's a couple that's on a date, or a family, or seniors that go there to really congregate. I know you also have a great meeting room, and a lot of people, such as our Rotary of Marietta, actually hold meetings there, and it's a real community institution, so we wanted to take time to honor you. So I'm gonna read a little information just for the audience, a bio and some information so we have everyone knows all about you and Richie's. So Linda Marie Williams is the co-founder, president and legendary owner of Richie's Real American Diner. Linda operates the Richie's Diner in Marietta and two other locations. Jack and Linda Williams began their American diner concept 31 years ago and wanted to bring back the original good old diner of the 1900s, where diners went to a great place to meet friends for good food and fun. Linda loves her staff, fondly know, fondly, fondly, and fondly knows her Richie's family, and after three decades of living in her diner daily, she's always there, you can bet she's the best mentor and mom to her Richie's family. Linda's children and grandchildren, who call her nanny, love her enthusiastic spirit, her passionate commitment to God and country, and her encouraging nature. Linda is a woman of heavenly wisdom, she abounds with love and people, love for people. She's a dazzling firecracker that shines light wherever she goes and to everyone she meets, and I always love her smile, and she always takes time to come and talk. Linda was raised in Alabama and at a young age learned the art of real southern and country cooking. Of course, Jack Williams, with his Texas roots, also loved barbecue. Together, his, the team have become two Marietta icons who are beloved in the community for their heartwarming spirit, giving nature, love of God and love of country. Jack was known as Cowboy Jack, and he and the family were here and honored some years ago, and Linda Williams, with her cute smile and twinkle in her eyes, says she's the one with the boots on the ground, so don't mess with Linda. Linda is delighted to have George Chavez, did I say, is it George? Jorge, pardon me. Jorge Chavez, who has been her right hand and her wingman, I wish everybody had a wingman, for 31 years, to escort her to the podium today, thank you, Jorge. Jorge is the honorary third son of Linda, and she appreciates his loyalty and incredible dedication to their Richie's family and guests. Linda has several family members here in attendance supporting her tonight, as well as online, all of whom are the successor generation to carry on the Richie's Diner family legacy. So I have a list of the people, but there's a lot of you. I'll read them really fast, Manuel Garcia, manager, Mario Banilla, manager, KT, manager, Cheryl Lynn Lyles, office manager, and everything gal, Sandy Harcourt, server, closer, wears every hat gal, and do whatever it takes gal, and then family guests, besides those online, we have daughter Sally and husband Gary Myers, daughter Cindy Horst, did I say it correctly? Horst? Grandson Bryce Myers and wife Heather, and children Caleb, Ella, and a German exchange student, Yendrick Schenk. Wo bist ein, uh, Hendrick, or, is it Yendrick? Okay, yeah, wo, good. Um, alright, and with that, would you like to say a few words?
I probably would.
Okay.
This is pretty sensitive, so.
Oh, oh, very sensitive.
Yes.
Well, I am not, okay. Anyway, I do want everybody to meet my management team, because they are here, the ones that are here, you guys raise your hands, you are, and Jorge is here, we have one more, KT, that didn't get here, and Jorge and I have been taking care of Richie's Diner for 31 years, Jack was here, and when Jack had to leave us, well, Jorge got just a little more this, that and the other from me, and so, but he's been a wonderful person, and spending 31 year, I cannot believe that a young man, such as this wonderful young guy, would spend 31 years at Richie's Diner, but I'll tell you, we need him, and we'll still take him another 31, that's necessary. He's been really good, and my other management team, these two guys here are your managers in Marietta Diner, so if you go in, say hi to those two guys, okay? And so, it's just been a joy to do what I do, I have to tell you, you know, Jack said he always wanted a diner. I wasn't particularly interested in a diner, but I got a diner, and so, uh, you know, come to find out, as I have grown in age and ability, I found out the most wonderful thing I get to do is go into each one of these diners every day and see the most wonderful crews, my, oh, my cooks in the kitchen, I love the cooks over in Marietta, really great guys, I'm with them a lot, because that was my main staff when I was in the diner all the time, frying Linda's chicken and doing, uh, all desserts, but it's just been a joy in my life, and I'm very happy, and all the people you see standing up here have made me very happy, and Sandy, I do wanna thank you constantly. Sandy, she gets a lot of calls from Jorge and me, and she simply answers, is, okay, what do you want, and when do you want it? And those are the kind of people that work for us, and it's just been a joy to be with it and do it, and I'm still in there just about every day on each one of them, because you know, you just have to go in on fried chicken day and make sure that they did it right, so I have to have a piece over here and a piece over there, and it works every time. Thank you all for everything, and I thank my crew and everybody, it's been a wonderful experience for me, and certainly for Jorge, you wanna say anything to anybody?
You, you say everything.
And on behalf of council and the city of Marietta, we'd like to present these flowers to you, and the mayor's going to read your certificate of recognition. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, so, um, on here, there's, it's always Jack and Linda, and I only know them as Mom and Dad. These, these people adopted my family and I when I came here, so I've, I've never called Linda Linda, and I think Cindy and Todd and this whole family are truly the cornerstone of our community. They, they, they've always been there, um, Jack used to call me his mule, and that's 'cause I was stubborn, you know, and, uh, I miss him more now than I ever have, but the, the good thing is, I get to come in and I see everybody every day. I was there twice today, I had my iguado on with this morning, they always take care of me, um, I get a big smile, Mom still comes to the table and sits down, um, Jack used to come and pray with me, we have lifelong friends together, Carl Karcher, William Tilly, um, so, it's, it's, I feel at home when I'm at Richie's, so it's, it's my home away from home, so. Richie's Diner was established in 1991, and it's celebrating 31 years of pleasing people, and you absolutely do that, and great country cooking. Whereas the Marietta location opening of Richie's Diner quickly became the cornerstone of our community, Jack and Mom Williams, lifetime dedication to the food industry, helped to develop the concept we know as the steakhouse chain, which, for those that don't know, that would be the BMW Group and others that are involved, which are, is our fine cider in our community and, and other restaurants, although I'm more partial towards Richie's, 'cause I like to split pea soup, and I used to argue with Dad that my soup was better than his, but, um, your diligence and enthusiasm, enthusiasm, made the diner one of the largest successful diners in, in the area for a long time, and that includes Temecula as well. Richie's Diner remains privately held, it's a family-run business, there's a lot of love in there, and I didn't see Todd, so I figure he's probably working or doing something, right? Oh, he's in Colorado, oh, okay, so, so we're, we're just gonna get down to the, the therefore here. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that I, Mayor Jonathan Ingram, on behalf of the Marietta City Council, recognize the positive impact of Richie's Diner and what it's done for our community. Marietta's community wishes to honor Jack and Linda Williams, the founders of Richie's Diner, as it is an important part of our community, and certainly an important part of our citizens' lives, so, and I get to come down and get my hug and give this to you.
Would council like to say a few words to Mrs. Williams and for Richie's Diner, please?
Mrs. Williams, um, the mayor actually hit it, um, Richie's Diner is definitely home for us here in Marietta. Um, I have to tell you that, um, I was with the mayor just the other day, having a wonderful lunch, and when I go to a restaurant, there's always a favorite, same, the same favorite for every restaurant, but at your restaurant, yes, in the same seat, exactly, at your restaurant, there is not a favorite meal. Everything on your menu really, truly is spectacular, especially your desserts, and what is so nice about going into Richie's Diner is the longevity of your employees, because it shows, because every time I go in there, I see the same faces, and that says a lot to you. Um, I do wanna let you know that I was there the other day with the mayor, I did pay for lunch, by the way, and, um, but again, I, I just wanna thank you so much, our families have been around this valley for many, many years. Sally, Gary and I and my brother Jeff go back to the early 80s when we all opened up our businesses, and we were involved in the Chamber of Commerce in the community, and so I just wanna thank you from the Stone family to your family, congratulations and God bless you.
Mrs. Williams, when I moved to this city in 2013, my husband and I said we were hungry, we were moving all day long, and it was very hot, so we went to your restaurant, and I told my husband it was like going into grandma's kitchen. My grandma was a wonderful cook, and so are you, and that became our favorite restaurant as a couple before he passed, and I wanna thank you, because you gave me memories, 'cause you walked over and you welcomed us to Marietta, and you didn't even know we had just moved in that day. So you are a very special person in my heart, thank you for all you do, thank you for all the great food you provide, especially your milkshakes, 'cause I'm a sucker for them. Congratulations, and here's to 31 more years of success, thank you so much.
Mrs. Williams, um, I, I concur with everybody, um, your restaurant is amazing, but it really touched our family's heart when my father-in-law came down to visit and ended up staying for a year with us and was going through treatment for brain cancer, and he would drive by and go to Richie's Diner after every time, and we would try to run there and meet him, so every time we go into the restaurant now, we always think of him and family, and that's what your restaurant means to me, as well as everyone else in this community. Thank you for being our family, we greatly appreciate you being here, and I concur, thanks to 31 more amazing years here in Marietta.
No, I think, uh, I think there's a little bit sweeter colored.
And with dark sunglasses.
Madam City Clerk, we're ready to, to roll forward and see if we can knock this out of the park. Alright, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. That was good.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Okay, thank you very much. Department and Commission Announcements, Madam City Mayor, or Madam City Manager, blah, blah, blah.
Thank you, Mayor, I have nothing this evening.
It's got, uh, council, the mayor pro tem pushing me here, she's like nudging me, go, go. Nothing, Madam City Manager? Okay, thank you. Governing body and commission announcements, Councilmember White.
For my governing body announcements, there have been no meetings since our last council session, so I have nothing to report, thank you.
Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I attended the WR cog meeting, I have nothing to report out, and then I attended the RTA meeting, but because I'm not an alternate, um, I was not accepted, but I did sit in the audience, and one thing that I will mention is RTA will have free bus rides on Election Day. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mary, I have no report at this time.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem.
No report.
Any person may address the governing bodies on any subject matter pertaining to city business. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the governing bodies on any matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes.
Madam City Clerk, I'd like you to also explain our process regarding once we close public comments, there will be no speaking afterward. If you could please explain that?
That is correct. So when I call for public comment, I will call the person up and after I close public comment, there will be no more to be received. And for non-agenda public comment, I have Francisco Urbina.
Thank you, Mr. Urbina. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Ingram, members of the City Council. First of all, I want to thank Mayor Ingram for returning a phone call regarding a problem three-story house at the end of our Cul-de-sac Street, 265, on Capera Court. The problem house, which there is a code enforcement case on, is 26540 Capera Court. Last Thursday, I called and left a voicemail message for code enforcement asking for a case number because remember, Mayor Ingram, you said, get me a case number, but no one has returned my call. And there's all these trashcans with garbage attracting berman, cockroaches, magnets, flies and rats now because one of my persimmons was nibbled on. And anyway, Mayor Ingram, I was not able to return all of your phone call with the information you wanted and I appreciate your willingness to call Waste Management and ask for an extra bin pickup. You know, code enforcement needs to start returning phone calls within 24 hours or at the most within 48 business hours. That has not been done. So what I and some of my neighbors did, we took matters into our own hands and started emptying some of those trash bins as we had room in ours because we don't want to wait forever for this issue to take care, being taken care of. I don't know, is there a shortage of code enforcement staff? If there is, then that needs to be made a priority for funding. And I don't know who's on the Riverside County Transportation Commission, or maybe that's part of WR cog, but I and many thousands of others who live in southwest Riverside County would like to say, yes, we all know we need more freeway traffic lanes, ideally six free lanes in each direction than the fast track lanes, you know, two in each direction. But right now, when the state of California has a budget surplus, we should be asking Assemblymember Sayarto to ask for funding to purchase right away on vacant land for the ultimate, right away, because that Arco Station at Temecula Parkway and the 15, they had to pay millions to purchase that out, whatever. So, and we need to keep economic development the number one priority. Public safety is important, but if you don't have the revenue to pay public safety, then the public safety isn't going to follow. And the police department cannot be everywhere. So I would urge those members who do not own a firearm to purchase a Smith &amp; Wesson 38 Special. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Urbina. Is Mr. Haller in the room or is he in back? Do you know? I'm sorry, I didn't see. The Mayor Potem was blocking my view. Would you take the opportunity to talk to Mr. Urbina and see what we can do to arrange getting a case number or what it will take to facilitate maybe getting somebody to take a peek at that if you would, please? Okay, any others in the queue for public comment at this time? Madam City Clerk?
That concludes public comments on non-agenda items.
Thank you very much. And we're going to go through items one through seven. Anybody pulled any items from the consent calendar at this time for discussion? Madam City Clerk?
I do have two public comments on consent, item number three and item number seven. Would you like to pull those, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Okay. So item three and seven have been pulled for discussion.
So we're going to go ahead and looking for a motion to approve the other items excluding three and seven, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I need to recuse myself on item three as I own investment property within 500 feet of item three. Thank you.
Okay. So Madam City Attorney recusing herself, or does she have to leave the dais at that point? Or can she just stay because it's a vote at this point?
She can stay because it's consent.
That's what I thought. Okay, because it's on consent, so you don't have to leave. All right, so we've got items one through seven, removing three and seven, and we have Councilmember Stone recusing herself. Is that correct?
Yes, and just as a reminder, we've pulled three, so she'll recuse at that time.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's been pulled.
All right, so we need a motion in a second, please? And that's on the remaining portion. That is not the one where you need to recuse yourself. Did you get that, Madam City Clerk? Because I, there it goes. That's okay. Moved by Councilmember Stone, seconded by Christie. Councilmember White.
Hopefully they see it now. There we go. Councilmember Stone, there we go. Thank you.
Okay.
Motion carries unanimously, five zero with the exception of items three and seven.
Thank you. All right, at this time, Mr. Klein. I think you're in the queue to speak.
Item seven?
Is it?
Mr. Mayor, so we're discussing item three, is that correct?
Okay, so we are discussing item three.
Yes.
Because I wasn't sure if he was just, they were talking on three and seven.
So we've pulled three, so.
We pulled three and seven.
Yes, correct.
Right.
So we're going to move to item three.
Okay, so we don't just want to take care of both of those after they're finished speaking? Or you just want to do them individually?
We can.
Yeah, I prefer to do that. It's quicker. Expedite the meeting.
No problem.
Mr. Klein, you're on deck, sir.
Mr. Klein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Counsel?
Many, many, many years ago, when the police station was built and ready for the ribbon cutting, a banner was hung over the wall on the corner there where the mobile unit sits along Jefferson. And it occurred to me when I saw that at the ribbon cutting, you know, we need a programmable message sign. And of course, you know, I approached the council members at the time about that and it was budget. So many years ago, when RCTC put the bus bench out here on the corner and concreted over and put the artificial turf in, I came in and I spoke to the previous Assistant City Manager and the Planning Manager at the time and I said, you know, we're doing this work out here, why don't we put a monument sign in? And I was told that, one, electric message signs aren't permitted in the city, however, we all know that the city is exempt from its own code. And nevertheless, that work was done out there. Not even a future was put in. So when I saw item seven on the consent calendar this morning, I thought, man, I'd like to go in and appeal to the City Council to give direction under item nine of the tasks of Michael Baker International, if the Council sees fit, to ensure that either of the alternatives include an LED, a programmable LED message sign on that monument. I mean, it makes sense to me that it's on the corner, prominent corner, we can advertise rather than putting up the temporary trailers out there that we do. And I didn't see any, talks about alternatives, I didn't see anything in the staff report or in Michael Baker International's scope of services. So I'm here to appeal to the Council to give some direction to staff, if you see fit, to include in that monument, in the three alternatives, programmable message sign. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Any other comments on item number seven?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so Mr. Ramaya, would you like to comment on that as well? Is that why I got you sitting down there?
Forgive me, Mr. Mayor. I'm here for item number three.
Okay, so then, so we have no more comments on seven. I can tell you, Mr. Klein, that is being addressed and we'll just leave it at that. There is discussion with that, sir. All right, so we're going to move to item number three. Do we have somebody that wants to comment on item number three? Okay, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Francisco Urbina.
Mr. Urbina.
Can we have the clock going? Madam City Clerk?
Good evening again, Mayor Ingram, members of the City Council. I reviewed online the staff report and I know this is a second reading. I think this is a good project for the city of Marietta and it will appeal to a certain clientele that wants to have a large lot and typically, you know, to be able to afford a large lot and/or build a custom home or whatever, it takes a certain amount of income and we need more sales tax revenue. The only point of comment I wanted to make, a suggestion for improvement in the future, I could not find on that staff report a copy of the tentative tract map or plat map to give me an idea, you know, I'm not familiar with the West Side of what is the layout of that proposed project. But I think it's a good project and I want to compliment the city planner Jeremiah, I think is his name. And in the future, if you can attach any applicable illustrations that can be available to members of the public that may not have time to come into City Hall and review the case file, it would be appreciated. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Urbina. All right. So any other speakers regarding that item?
Seeing none.
All right, fantastic. So I'm looking for a motion to approve items three and seven now, please. I need a motion in a second.
I'm going to do consent again.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. Can we take them individually since it's been pulled?
Yep, that's fine. So let's go with item number three, please. And Councilmember Stone, you're not going to vote on that? I need a motion in a second. Okay, so you can, does she, you want her to check abstain just to? It's just abstain or recuse, yes.
There we go.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
So we got she was refused on record.
Motion carries four to one with Councilmember Stone recusing herself.
Thank you very much. Item number seven, colleagues.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
We've got item number eight that we're going to move to now. The short-term vacation rental ordinance updates. Now this is receiving file, is that correct?
No, Mr. Mayor, it's actually introduction of an ordinance.
So, I understand, but I'm a little confused. I thought this was an update. We've already went through this originally, no?
Sorry, Mayor. So this is a two-parter and they're not both this evening. So the item for you tonight is related to the fines and then either the next council meeting or the one after that will be doing the update.
Okay. All right, yeah, because I wanted to make sure. All right, Staff, you're on deck.
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Counsel. My name is Chris Tracy. And for everyone in the audience, I'm a senior planner here with our Advanced Planning Division. Also joining us tonight, behind us is Andy Crowe with our Building and Safety Division, and he's here to help answer questions. Today, we'll be presenting a draft ordinance with a recommended action and I'll be covering those details further in the next slides. Kind of the four items with these updates tonight, the first are to provide for fine updates related to short-term vacation rentals consistent with Senate Bill 60, which was signed into law last year. Second, provide for fine updates for building code violations and we'll provide some additional details on why that's covered under this. Third, provide a required hardship waiver process for all fine types. And lastly, to address two operational updates amending existing short-term vacation rental operational standards. Just some background on the existing fine structure, the city has an administrative citation program that allows for civil fines to be imposed for violations of the municipal code. The maximum amounts allowable for these fines are set by state law and our municipal code reflects this under Government Code Section 36900. Those fines are capped at $100 for the first violation, 200 for a second, within one year, 500 for a third. Presently, the city's municipal code sets the administrative citation amounts at these levels. Kind of switching gears here, I'll cover the short-term rental fine structure. As I mentioned, last year, the governor signed into law Senate Bill 60, which provided for changes under the same Government Code Section. With this law, the new maximum penalty structure was established specifically for short-term rental ordinances throughout the state. A maximum short-term vacation rental fine structure was a desired component based on the direction at the last update. Continuing with this, these new penalties for violation as proposed include a maximum penalty of $100 for the first offense for failure to pay a registration fee, a $1,500 fine for any other type of first offense, $3,000 fine for a second offense within one year, and $5,000 fine for the third or additional offense within one year. Pivoting here, we'll also cover the building code violations because it's under the same Government Code Section as well. With this, it raised the maximum fine to $130 for the first violation. It's currently $100 in our code. $700 for the second violation within one year and this is currently 500. And 1,300 for a third violation within a year and it's presently 1,000.
36900, right?
The building code structure encourages compliance and to, you know, for the public's health and safety for violations and we're recommending these updates consistent with 36900. Lastly, with these fine updates, there's a new hardship waiver process that's required. This was a requirement that was added for all fine types. This requires the city to provide a hardship waiver and hearing process to reduce the amount of a fine that's issued upon a responsible party. They'd have to show that they had made an effort to comply after the first violation was issued and payment of that full amount would impose an undue financial burden upon that person. The hardship waiver framework is also provided in the draft ordinance. And lastly, here, I'll just cover some of the operational updates. These were two items that were desired from the last meeting.
Per direction.
Per direction from Council? Yeah, in March. The first one was removing the prohibition regarding the use of electronic key to access a property. And the idea here was to improve the safety for the guests and property owners. The use of electronic key would eliminate the risk of duplication of a physical key because the code would be unique each time. And the second update was to eliminate the option of a transfer of a permit when a property was sold. In that situation, the short-term vacation rental permit would automatically terminate and go back into the permitting pool of 300 maximum permits. And staff's also suggesting that some exceptions be provided with this update for locations when there's a marriage, someone, there's a death, someone's transferring a property into a trust or LLC or similar, as long as it's owned by the same people as original permit.
So that, when we had the conversation on that, I distinctly asked to make sure that if a property was relinquished and/or sold, that that one of those 300 would go back in, but it would be for those that were on a list waiting to get on that list, correct?
It would just, we don't have a list, but it would be, once we're at that point, we'd be at that, I would be going through that list.
Well, and that was one of the concerns because what you're bringing forward is the policy that we ask you to work on with the fine implementation, everything. And I just want to make sure that we're making clear that with this ordinance, we already provide, and you might get into that due process, that we don't just hand somebody a fine, that there's due process with all this before it's done. Because there's a misconception about this and you might- Because there's a misconception about this, and you might want to elaborate just a little on that, if you would, please.
Yeah, I'll be happy to. I mean, we want to give everyone an opportunity to correct the issue before we're even issuing any sort of violation. The idea is to get compliance before we're there. But, you know, the fines just encourage that compliance as well, so, but that's our first approach.
It's teeth.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, sorry. In closing, staff recommends the following actions. Approve the first reading to introduce ordinance number 58222. Retitle and waive further reading of the ordinance as provided in attachment two. And find the actions exempt from SEQA in accordance with 15061B3 as provided in attachment five. Staff with planning and building are here to answer any questions. And David's here to answer questions related to code enforcement as well.
Okay, I'm going to bring it back up to the diocese for any questions from my colleagues, please. Cindy? Councilmember Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one question, is how long do you give them to fix a violation before you start the finding process?
Mr. Mayor, I can answer that question. Good evening. So, code enforcement has a system of progression. So, we'll give a property owner an initial two-week compliance period, and then a second follow-up period that lasts another week if there's no response. So, if there's no response after that second period, then staff has the option to issue an administrative citation, which would be the first level.
And that process is approximately 30 days, from my experience, by the time you get to that.
Roughly.
So, and that's what I was...
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, yeah. That's, I was looking at the overall time period. Thank you very much.
Thirty-four working days of fire.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions for my colleagues? Hearing none. We're going to go ahead, and I guess now what we're looking for is a motion to approve the staff recommendation, Madam Clerk?
We're going to actually take public comment?
Okay, public comment.
Okay, Matt Hinton.
Mr. Hinton. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Matt Hinton. My wife and I, we own barefoot vacation rentals. We manage about 40 vacation rentals in Temecula Valley. We actually own and operate a permitted short-term vacation rental in the city of Marietta as well. Today, I'd like to talk about a couple of changes that we would like to see to the ordinance. First of all, the fines, which I like the updated fines. We need more fines. We need, we, we're proposing $1,000 per night for unpermitted rentals that do not have the proper zoning. If you're not in the zoning ER1, ER2, RR, you shouldn't be doing it, period. Heavier fines. Now, for the permitted short-term rentals, I would like to see essentially a three strikes and you're out for a year. Strikes being given with evidence of violation not being remedied within 60 minutes. So, not if a neighbor calls and it's nothing, no evidence, and if we can remedy it in 60 minutes, there's no strike, no fine. First violation, $1,000 plus one strike. Second violation, $1,500 plus a strike. Third violation, $2,000 and a loss of permit for a year. Occupancy? Occupancy, we're proposing keep the zoning restrictions and limit occupancy based on square footage of the house and lot size. Our house is 3,600 square feet. We're on two and a half acres. We're only allowed to have eight people at our, at our house, which is a low number. We're proposing 200 square feet per person. One acre and below, max occupancy of 10 people. One to two acre, acres, max occupancy of 16 guests. Two acres and above, max occupancy of 20 guests. Day guests, right now, we can only have, I believe it's one day guest. That, that's, like, even when I have my family over, we're over this maximum. And I don't see why with our lot size, we can't have, you know, within reason, more guests. And as long as you're doing it right, you know, it, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be an issue, which brings me to the next one. Noise, always the, the largest issue. Require noise monitors inside and out. We can up the occupancy, and, but we put, we put monitors on the inside, we put monitors on the outside, we have cameras on the outside of the property. We know if they're inside playing music loud and they bring it outside, we, we already know before, before a neighbor knows. It's, it's a couple of minutes of a steady sound, usually music, always, and then we get notified, then we contact the guests. Allow amplified music outside, but still abide by the city's noise ordinance. Parking, parking also is really restricted. No limit for onsite parking.
That's your time, Mr. Hinton.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. We'll, we'll take those into consideration. Mr. Urbina?
Good evening again, Mayor Ingram, members of the city council. I'm not fully up to speed on this. First of all, does an Airbnb or a short-term vacation rental require a conditional use permit with a public hearing? Or is this some sort of administrative?
No, sir. I think that would, we couldn't really answer that question. I think that's something where you'd have to reach out the staff to go through that, where it probably wouldn't, we would be engaging you from the diocese at this point.
Yeah, okay, well, I, since the item was labeled discussion, I, I don't see why, you know, that can't be answered.
Madam, City Attorney?
This is time for public comment, and then the council discusses what to do on the action.
Well, but can anyone answer my question?
As the mayor said, it's not a time for questions to the council. You, staff can answer that question for you after this item.
I understand what you said. I don't agree with that. We have an issue on the other street on the corner of Buxton Court and Winterset Court. There's another three-story house, 4,600 square feet, and there's always all these cars parked out there. Some of those, the neighbors, they couldn't come here because our council meetings are at 6:00 PM. They should be at 7:00 PM, like the city of Temecula, because 6:00 PM is the dinner hour. But anyway, I guess I will have to meet with city staff and possibly code enforcement staff or Mr., and make an appointment to see David Chatarangu to inquire about this, what we think could be a potentially problem house. I do want to say that I agree with the gentleman who, I guess, owns some short-term vacation rentals, that the fines should be harsh, and parking needs to be taken into consideration. And, you know, personally, I don't like amplified music beyond 10:00 PM, and neither do my neighbors, so that needs to be addressed. The other thing that perhaps needs to be addressed is, is someone from the city going to periodically review to make sure they're in compliance? If not, then they, there needs to be something in place in the ordinance to potentially avoid the permit, whatever. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Haller, would you address that with Mr. Urbina with respect to the firm that was hired, that came on board for the implementation of this and the complaint process, so that he's aware of, of what's going on?
I can do that after the item is over? Or is that what you're...
Yes, that's what I'd like you to do, is, is actually take him out in the corridor and explain the process, if you would. Does that work, Madam City Attorney? Okay, thank you. All right, so we're going to bring it, are we, well, let's, do we have any other comments this time, public comments?
Seeing none.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Clerk. We're going to bring it back up to the diocese. Councilmember Warren?
I have no comment, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Stone?
No questions at this time.
Councilmember White?
Thank you, staff, for your report and for incorporating our items that we gave to you previously, and I do agree with the mayor's comment regarding putting more of a tooth or a bite into the STVR ordinance fines, so thank you for the update. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Mayor Potem?
Thank you, staff, and back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, staff. And, and, and this is an ongoing process for those who didn't attend prior meetings that may have had questions. I can tell you that we've been diligent with this. We've tried to be fair, make sure that, that we weren't burdening people that were complying. What we're trying to do is make sure that we do have a level playing field and that people have a right to quiet enjoyment of, of their structures in their homes. So, having said that, as you heard, this is the first phase. There are other phases coming. We'll take suggestions in order. I heard staff, watch staff here taking mental notes and writing things down. So, when it comes back the next time, I'm certain that there'll be more discussion. On that note, if we have no other comments, I'm looking, do we need to, is, we're looking for a motion on this, right, Madam City Clerk?
Correct.
So, I'm looking for a motion on the short-term vacation rental ordinance updates, and that's DC 2022-2639, introduction of the ordinance number 582-22, entitled in ordinance of the city of, and it's cut off there, so...
I can read it, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Marietta, California, amending Chapter 1.26 Administrative Citations and Chapter 5.27 Short-Term Vacation Rentals of the Marietta Municipal Code and Finding of Exemption from SEQA.
Oh, there it is. Yeah. Okay, we are looking for a motion in a second. We got that.
Motion carries unanimously, five-zero.
Okay. So, we're going to, at this point, we're going to move through and governing body announcements, starting with Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to defer.
Thank you. Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You will see my governing body announcements on the screen here in one second. Do I, oh, sorry.
One, one.
Sorry.
Your time's up.
Yeah. And you can review them on our website. And I want to thank Mayor Jonathan Ingram and Chief Tony Conrad for coming out to Michelle's place. First annual human pink ribbon. I think there, there's a picture there, right there. You will see it at our amphitheater. It was very successful, and I also want to thank Dominique and city staff that came out to support launching Breast Cancer Awareness Month. That concludes my governing body announcements. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Stone. Councilmember White?
I will defer till our next meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Potem?
I will also defer. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. I'll just take the opportunity to say, this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Please attend our event this weekend, and we look forward to it. Thank you, Chief. Thanks to both of our chiefs for everything you do for our community. It's greatly appreciated. Let's think pink. It's important, it impacts people's lives. And gentlemen, if you think that you get to skate when it comes to breast cancer, you're playing a game that you're dead wrong about. 1,500 men a year are diagnosed with pectoral cancer. And you have millions in this country that are survivors, but it comes from being proactive and making sure that you're being tested. Look and see if you have the BRCA gene, one or two, because that will dictate whether you might get pectoral cancer in your lifetime. On that note, motion to adjourn. Thank you, guys. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
And my son's best friend will be coming on first, so watch for Austin Montgomery. Sounds like Johnny Cash and Elvis, so, thank you.